Waterloo City Council Work Session, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Foyce, Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here. Motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Second.
I need the motion.
Oh, I thought you were making a motion. I make a motion to approve the agendas proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mo- opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this evening, or afternoon, the topic is discussion of recycling program submitted by Randy Bennett, our Public Works Manager. So Randy, I'll turn it over to you. Randy, could you speak into the mic? I have a little trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's do this. Sorry about that. Okay. So, just to give you a little bit of brief overview of the service. So, back in 2003, the city of Waterloo introduced a voluntary curbside recycling yard waste program as required by the Iowa DNR and the Blackhawk County Waste Management. At that time, we had twenty-three thousand garbage accounts in Waterloo, and currently we have eleven thousand accounts that are participating in both the yard waste and the recycling program. We also provide the compost facility, which was established for the residents to drop off their yard waste currently right now, and to pick up both the yard waste recycling and the refuse material. We use side loading equipped refuse trucks to perform those tasks. And it was originally designed to divert as much material as we possibly could away from the landfill. So, currently, we collect yard waste curbside April through November, along with collecting that three times per month. So, residents can pay an additional fee of three dollars and ten cents per month for the four extra yard waste collection through the months of June through September. So, since nineteen ninety-one, Iowa has been prohibited from putting yard waste from being deposited in the landfills. And as of April seventh of two thousand and three, the city of Waterloo also adopted a resolution banning residents from burning leaves or yard waste on their properties. And under the Iowa Administrative Code, local governments in Iowa must offer a yard waste collection program such as curbside collection or a drop-off site. So, that's what we're currently doing as well, too.
Excuse me, Randy, are you- do you have copies of that PowerPoint for us?
Yes, I did. I sent them electronically to you.
You already emailed that one.
Separately, or was it- because I didn't find it attached?
It's in an email, I'm sorry.
I got it in here.
Okay.
Okay.
You're the only one. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I can- I emailed everybody, but I can also-
Okay, I just missed it. Sorry, Randy. Thank you.
So, continuing on about the compost site. Once organic material makes it to our facility, it is then processed through a grinder, and then from that point, we take that material and we put it into windrows. And it is recommended that we at least try to turn that at least twice per month, so that way it helps the decomposing of that material. And then, from there, we wait till usually closer to fall, once the material is properly decomposed, then it's processed, and then that way we can give it back to the residents. Whatever spoils, we end up stocking that back up and then letting it process a little bit more before screening that again. You know, the yard waste site, it takes a lot of man-hours to properly maintain that site, so. So, when the original program was set up, the original and still the current fee was three dollars per month for both curbside and the yard waste collection for those containers. The curbside recycling is collected once per month, and then, due to the influx of the holiday season, December and January was also increased for that collection to twice a month, or twice a month, yeah. So, currently, recycling is collected on assigned residential garbage days. It is currently collected through deliveries to our material recovery facility, which is Cedar Valley Recycling and Transfer. Once they actually receive it, it's dispersed out into lines. They separate the material, cardboard, paper, plastic, tin. Unfortunately, there's usually some garbage in there as well, too. Then they'll separate those out, and then each commodity is then baled, and it'll be sold to prospective factories and/or for repurposing. So, one of the biggest things right now, national recycling is in danger. According to the U.S. Recycling Association, the U.S. exports about one-third of its recyclables, and nearly half of that goes to China. For decades, China has used recyclables from around the world to supply its manufacturing boom. In twenty seventeen, China declared this foreign waste, including too many other non-recyclable materials that are dirty or even hazardous. So, China listed twenty-four kinds of solid waste it would ban to protect China's environment, interest in the people's health of their country. This makes it a lot more challenging for MRFs in the United States to stay afloat. So, until recently, contamination really hasn't been a huge concern throughout the recycling process. We have now learned that contamination is extremely costly. Currently, Cedar Valley Recycling charges the city a thirty-five dollar per ton contamination fee if there's too much contaminants in our recycling. In FY eighteen alone, the city was charged forty-five thousand dollars for a contamination fee of a material that we had taken to their site. But contamination didn't just go to the recycling part of the material, it also contaminates our yard waste site. So, as you can see here, there's garbage where we've had everything from different trash, ball hitches, extension cords, everything else in there as well, and that's something that on our end, we have to have staff to go out there and remove that as well, so we can provide a good finished product. So, what is the primary cause of the contamination for the city of Waterloo? Currently, the city of Waterloo utilizes the same ninety-five gallon container for both recycling and yard waste. This was initiated- this was originally initiated as an economic and convenient way for the city to provide curbside collection of both yard waste and recycling to our residents. We have seen an increase in the contamination at the MRF and at our compost facility. So, our current contract with material recovery facility, Cedar Valley Recycling, has expired. The RFP was sent out last October twenty eighteen with only one vendor expiring, and that was Republic. One of the things that Republic did have in that RFP, they just stated that if they were going to take any of the material from us, that we were going to have to separate those two separate containers, one for both recyclables and one for the yard waste, so then that way, you know, the material wasn't contaminated. Because one of the things that we did do at that time, the city of Waterloo did for a couple-week period where we took our material over there, so they can kind of see what contamination was, and that's kind of what spurred that. So, that's pretty much where we're at right now. It's time for the city to start researching different practices for our recycling service. So, before we get into that, one of the things I want to kind of really point out is, you know, what are all the daily activities that we do in the sanitation department? So, you know, on any- every given day, you know, they're doing normal garbage collection, recycling, yard waste. You know, we're maintaining the compost facility. The staff is also utilized for legal dumps, code enforcement, bulk items, dumpsters. They also assist with a lot of community cleanup programs. So, there's a lot of different tasks that are taking place in the sanitation department. So, currently, we're doing that with eleven employees, and just to give you a list of some of the equipment that we use, we've got the twelve automated refuse trucks, two rear-loading trucks, a horizontal brush grinder, a trommel, a windrow turner, and a loader. So, on any given day, just to kind of give you a breakdown as far as what are our priority tasks, it takes, you know, five employees every day to do a normal garbage collection, anywhere from two to four employees every day for yard waste and recycling, depending on the day of the week that it is. You know, we always try to keep at least one employee at the compost site, even though we need more than that. We always try to keep one out there, and then it takes two employees to do our- to collect our bulk in our dumpster that we need to do throughout the week. So, with all those different things, we have a lot of areas in the sanitation department that we are falling behind on. Code enforcement is also part of some of the duties that we currently have to do in sanitation, and we've got a backlog on that. A lot of our residential cart, both repairs and deliveries, we're anywhere from three to four weeks usually behind, if not longer, to get a lot of those done. Maintenance of the compost facility, like I said, a lot of times it takes anywhere from two to three people if you're screening or running the trommel, you know. It takes more staff to be able to do those, to put the windrows back together, pull some of the debris and stuff out, along with, you know, the legal dumps that this department also is responsible for, going out and maintaining, cleaning those up, along with all the different volunteer organizations that, you know, throughout the summer, it's almost every week, you know, which is really great for the community to assist out with those. So, these are a lot of other areas that it just makes it hard to get those accomplished as well. So, one of the considerations is if we decided to contract out the curbside recycling. It would free up the sanitation department and employees to help address a lot of the struggling areas that we have. So, right now, we've got three courses of actions that we're kind of going to try to talk about today. The one would be to try to continue on with what we're doing right now, which, you know, for the foreseeable future, that really doesn't make the most sense. Like, right now, we don't have a contract with our Cedar Valley Recycling, so at any given time, they could just stop taking our recyclables. They could increase the cost. Like I said, we don't have a contract, so, you know, that's not sustainable, and that's really not a good position for the city to be in. So, really, continuing on with what we're doing is really not the best idea. The second one would be is if we went ahead and purchased the eleven thousand containers to separate both our yard waste and the recyclable materials. The estimated cost to purchase those cans is six hundred thousand dollars, but it's not just the purchases of those, you know, it's also the inventory, the maintenance and repair, and everything else that would go along with that. And then, of course, we still need to send out an RFP to rebid the recycling, as far as who would actually take that material once we got it collected and to be able to do that. So, the one- couple of the cons as far as this option would go is this still only is just once-a-week collection for recyclables, and, you know, like I said, we have all the additional maintenance and that for the staff to do the additional cans. So, it's pretty much providing the same level of service right now without expanding it. And then, the third course of action would be is we would contract out our curbside recycling program. There's two different ways that we could approach looking at doing this. One is continue on with the voluntary program, kind of like what we're doing right now, and/or the second option is what we would prefer, we'd look at the mandatory, having everyone participate in the recycling program. So, just to kind of give a little bit of background, if we were to look at doing for both either voluntary or the mandatory, we would want to increase the recycling to twice-a-month collection. By doing that, we would hopefully garner a lot more materials being collected to help divert that from the landfill. By contracting out, you know, then the cost associated for the six hundred thousand for the cans and that. On the voluntary side, it would be, of course, more than that if it was actually required for all twenty-three thousand user accounts. But then that would be offset through the vendor to maintain doing that. One of the biggest things is our contamination issues. Like I said, last year, we had forty-five thousand dollars worth of contamination fees by separating those cans, which would be an option, too, or this one should help significantly reduce that, because by having the different containers, not only on the recycling side should the contamination be reduced, but then also at our yard waste site, that would be reduced as well, because you're not using the same container to collect them both. On the city's standpoint, this would also have a reduction on vehicle expenses, so we wouldn't have the extra fuel maintenance and everything that we do, and it also would help extend the life cycle of those vehicles, which would be a good thing. And then, this also would help free up our staff for those struggling areas that we're not able to provide the citizens right now. Like I said, the code enforcement, cart delivery and repair, yard waste, illegal dumps, all these other areas that were, you know, it's taken several weeks, if not longer, to get to, or months, you know, we'd just be able to provide a better service. And then, you know, especially the other point to- what we want to point out is by contracting out, we would want to increase the collection to at least twice-a-month collection, so that way, hopefully, we're collecting a lot more recyclable materials. So, that would be under both the voluntary and the mandatory. If we actually would look towards the mandatory side by having everybody do that, I think there's some additional cost savings that we could also save on this is- because currently, right now, we also have the drop-off sites, so, which is a point of contention. I've had discussions with some council members as well, too, but, you know, they get used pretty substantially right now by a lot of different individuals, but unfortunately, there's also a lot of debris that gets blown around from the different sites. It's something we've worked with the contractors on, trying to do a better job on. We've been out there as well, trying to clean that up. But, you know, with the drop-off sites, we had eleven thousand dollars worth of contamination fees in that in FY eighteen. So, if we did the mandatory this way, everybody would be onto the program, and we could probably look at doing away with those sites, and then that would help kind of clean those up. And when you look at our, you know, when you look at between the two, I think we're, you know, the main goal is trying to divert as much material away from the landfill, and that's kind of where, you know, the other considerations that we want to take in- take part in this. So, the planned lifespan of the landfill is roughly eighty years with the current recycling rate that's going on right now. The estimated cost for a new set of landfills is around six million dollars, which ultimately affects our tipping fees. So, anytime that they have to add, you know, there's also an increased cost on doing that. So, the more that we can recycle now, you know, it's going to extend the life of the landfill, and then hopefully keep our tipping fees at a lower cost, which is everything that we want to try to do. Plus, it helps reduce greenhouse grass, and it's just a lot more environmentally friendly by recycling. So, that really is what we want to do. So, we also kind of want to just talk a little bit on the tonnages, as far as to kind of give you guys some information on what we do. So, currently, right now, we take fourteen thousand four hundred tons of garbage to landfill annually, which costs us around forty dollars and twenty-five cents per ton, which is just under five hundred and eighty thousand a year is what that costs us. For our four drop-off recycling sites, we average around seven hundred tons a year on that, which our current price on that is roughly a hundred and thirty-five dollars per ton, which is, you know, around ninety-four thousand five hundred for the processing, and like I said, kind of stated earlier, it's around eleven thousand for contamination fees that's associated with that. So, it's just a little over a hundred and five thousand a year on what that is. And then, on the curbside recycling, we get around five hundred tons a year, which it costs us ninety dollars per ton for the processing of that, and that's pretty much split, forty-five thousand for the processing, and then forty-four thousand five hundred for the contamination. And primarily, reason why that is kind of a split is because we use the same container for both yard waste and that. So, when they're getting that material, you know, some of that material, they have to separate it out. If they can- they clean it up, they'll recycle it, and then unfortunately, if it has too much contamination, unfortunately, that'll end up going to the landfill if it's just got too much. So, that's why, you know, using that same container really, really isn't the best option. So, just to give you a little bit more breakdown on our operating cost, so if we were to consider looking at contracting this out, on average cost for three automated side loader trucks for one year, for the fourteen weeks, would be an additional thirty thousand dollars a year annual that we would save for both fuel, vehicle maintenance, and that. We didn't include labor on that, because like I said, you know, we have a lot of the other struggling areas that, you know, we'd like to provide a better service at and be more proactive on that, so our labor would just be utilized in those other areas. So, kind of with that, where we're at right now, our recommendation is what we'd like to do is go ahead and try to get an RFP put together to where we could send that out to the different respective companies that provide the recycling, and, you know, have two different parts. One would be the voluntary, like what we're currently doing right now, and then the other aspect of it would be the mandatory, where we would try to have all twenty-three thousand users do that, and then that way, we can try to come back with a better cost on what it would be to operate a more efficient and a better well-run recycling program. So, with that, I guess I'm kind of open to some questions, if you guys have them.
Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Adams.
Randy, I did have one question. When you- what I'm hearing here is that you're recommending that we move to something different, and I hear voluntary and mandatory. When you start getting into the mandatory side of things, what kind of, I guess, things would we expect to have happen from a standpoint, let's say it's mandatory and someone doesn't do it?
And so, if they didn't want to participate in it, they would just continue to put it in the garbage. So, the thing of it is, we're just trying to look at the bigger picture. The most convenient way for users to dispose of whether it's garbage or the recycling is right at their respective property. So, if we had that container right at their property to where they have the recycled material, they can just put it in there. It's coal-mingled, it's not like they have to separate it, it's just right there. So, if somebody just doesn't want to do that, you know, they can still put it in the trash can, and then that still goes to the landfill. I mean, that would be their choice. But ultimately, we have to look at what's the bigger picture. The more material that we can divert from the landfill, the better off we are, because that's going to help extend the life of the landfill. So, and I realize mandatory is kind of a harsh word, but, you know, to me, it's, you know, we're trying to be good public servants, good environmentalists, you know, providing this service, and it's kind of one of those pay me now, pay me later, because if you just continue to just, you know, there unfortunately, just in recycling in general, and right now, because of the commodity prices are not as good, there are some communities out in the nation that have just completely gone away from recycling, because it's cheaper just to landfill it. Well, I don't- even though that is cheaper, in our opinion, we don't really think that's the best option to go. I mean, we want to get into a rep- with a REPL company that, you know, we're going to require that we know from when they go to collect it, all the way to when it's disposed of, that we make sure that it's actually getting recycled, and that the contractor isn't just turning around down the road and just taking it to landfill. I mean, we don't want to do that. We want to get in with REPL company that we know that is making sure that it's getting recycled, because ultimately, at the end of the day, we want to be environmentalist and making sure that we're doing our due diligence as well, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Got several questions, Randy. First, you were saying that if we did contract it out, we would still keep the same number of staff members?
Yeah, as of right now, yeah, because what we'd want to do is, like I said, those struggling areas that we're not keeping up with right now, we would at least want to see what we could do to provide that service that quite frankly, I think the citizens deserve. You know, I'm not saying that something time down the road it potentially couldn't, but as of right now, we wouldn't want to reduce it. We just want to make sure that we're-
So, we would be adding on a cost with no cost savings associated, right? Other than maybe what we're paying for the contamination?
We would be providing more of a service, because like I said, right now, we're collecting recycling once per month, where if we contract this out, we would want to at least have twice-a-month collection. Because I think some of the issues that we have where some of our tonnages are low is when we have one container that the people are going back and forth between the yard waste and the recycling. So, from the one week to the next, you know, I don't think we're really diverting as much material away from the landfill as we could. So, you know, while it's going to cost us more, I think we're actually providing a better service, because by having two separate containers-
I agree.
That then you can- you'll have your designated one, that would be for recycling, and you'll have your designated for yard waste.
But potentially, we're adding a cost without seeing any direct cost savings. It's a better service. I totally agree.
And I guess one thing I want to clarify, too, the yard waste would still be just optional. That wouldn't be mandatory. If, you know, we'd have to try to come up with what a potential cost would be for that. If people want to continue just to take it to the yard waste site without accruing a cost on the yard waste side, that would strictly be voluntary on their part. You know, it would just be on the recycling portion of it is the only thing that we would want, because like I said, ultimately, we want to divert it from the landfill.
So, for the RFP, what are you using for the estimates on users? Just based on right now?
Yeah, because right now, we have eleven thousand accounts that are volunteering for the recycling program. So, that's- that would be the voluntary if we continued just to do like what we're doing right now.
Okay.
The other side is where we have twenty-three thousand user accounts. That's where we would incorporate the other half to get them initiated into the program and try to divert that from landfill.
And my third and final question, maybe is a silly one, but we're talking about contamination of what we get from the bins and take to the landfill, but doesn't it also contaminate our trucks? Don't we need that? I mean, how do you make sure? Are you just going to have one truck that's for yard waste?
Well, we clean our trucks. They- I mean, when they go from one use to the other, our staff is always cleaning the trucks.
So, they're totally cleaned out, so that our trucks aren't contaminated?
The issue is actually coming from using the same container, because as much as you try- you get wet grass that's stuck in there, and you go to dump it, it doesn't all come out, and then the next week, you know, if it's recyclables, and you've got that in there, and then it's dried up, and then it pulls it out, or vice versa. You know, it's- really, the contamination is coming from using the same container for both.
Okay, thank you. And, oh, I'm sorry, I had a fourth question. Are you going to have to wait till you get answers to the RFPs to give an estimate on the cost to the homeowner that signs up?
We kind of have done some preliminary, but the problem is without having the RFP to where you can really get a true cost. And just because we do an RFP does not necessarily mean we have to do that, you know, but at least ways, you know, we're moving forward, and we're trying to do that, and to see whether or not we really, you know, want to go that route. If for some reason, we go to the RFP and the cost comes back and it's too high, and you guys don't feel that that's in the best, you know, interest of the city and the constituents, then we can-
Well, I know a lot of other cities have the three cans, and it's much more effective and efficient, so, thank you.
Counselor Smith.
So, Randy, just to make sure I'm clear on the mandatory, that is recycling only. It's got nothing to do with yard waste.
Correct.
And do we know the eleven thousand customers right now, how many of them do both, and how many of them only do one or the other?
Unfortunately-
Is there any way?
We've never polled it to try to see exactly who's using what. You know, like I said, we do have some individuals that pay for the extra container, and we don't even know, do some of them pay for the extra container just so they can have two, one for yard waste and one for that, but unfortunately, of the eleven thousand, we haven't polled that to do that.
And so, if you did mandatory, you'd be talking about twenty-three thousand rather than eleven thousand?
That would be correct.
Okay. When you mentioned several times in your slide about code enforcement, is that not part of your world? Because I thought that was a different department.
Well, we do all the collection for it. So, I mean, we work within the city, but we have the trucks, we have the staff. They just, you know, we provide them whatever we collect for paperwork side, and then they do that portion of it. So, it's in a different department, but we do all the legwork, or the manual labor part of it, I should say.
Gotcha. And you talked about having five garbage trucks, five days a week?
Yeah, we have collection for refuse five days a week. That is correct.
Okay. I thought for some reason, I thought we only had Ross four days a week.
When- and Sam, you might have to correct me if I'm wrong. I think when we did the four ten-hour days that- back then, but now that- now it's five days a week.
Gotcha.
Now that we're doing it, regular eight-hour shifts.
And then the six hundred thousand dollars for the eleven thousand?
That's just for eleven thousand.
Cans?
It would be more if we did it for everybody.
Okay, so it's basically fifty bucks a can?
Thereabouts, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then do you happen to know, and I'm, I'm sure you don't, uh, because of your tenure, but when Waterloo went from, uh, like a two-person truck to a one-person truck, didn't we reduce staff? I'm seeing I had not-
It used to be fifteen, from what I understand.
Okay, I mean, it, it would just seem to me, and going back to Councilman Juon, I mean, to me, that would be logical. And I'm not looking to lay anybody off, but through attrition or whatever, I would, I would expect that using technology would allow us to reduce staff. I mean, that's kinda the way the world works.
You know, at front, I would wanna make sure that we kept what we had. Cause like I said, we do have areas that we're struggling in. And, you know, to provide that service as of right now, I'd wanna, to keep that staff to make sure that we're adequately getting that performed. But in the future, through nutrition, if, if we got to that point, you know, maybe we can consider, um, reducing it. But for right now, I'd wanna keep it the same.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up? Did, would our staff still, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Randy, uh, several things. Uh, first of all, at the ver- very beginning, you'd said, uh, that it's thirty-five dollars per ton penalty for contamination if there's too much contamination. What's that mean?
So like, for instance, when we take our recyclable material, um, to Cedar Valley Recycling, if, if, if it's got too much yard waste and, um, when they go to dump it, then we get charged thirty-five dollars per ton on that for them to try to sort that material out, still salvage and recycle what they can. And unfortunately, if it has too much, then they have to, to landfill it.
But who determines too much? And what is too much?
Um, they do-
Do we even know?
I, I unfortunately do not. So that, that's the downside to it.
How do we know it's even too much? How do we know that we're being charged properly, correctly? How do we know that?
Sam, if you wanna step up?
Yep, coming up here, yep.
Cause you're also on the, uh, commission too, right?
I'm sorry?
You're on the commission?
Yes.
No, but yeah, please step up, identify yourself and, um-
Sam Barrett, sanitation department supervisor. To answer your question, uh, Mr. Morsy, I've been over to Cedar Valley Recycling. When they just, when they make that determination, when the truck is dumped, they, they look in the pile and if there's a little bit of yard waste in there, it's contaminated. So I would, I would tell you that ninety to a hundred percent of the time when our yard, when our recycling goes over there, it's contaminated. So almost, almost every time we dump, it's contaminated, which is ninety dollars a ton.
And, and when we're dumping, uh, Sam, uh, how much does that, that load, how much does that weigh? Is that over a ton each load or, or what?
Uh, it's probably close to five or six tons.
Okay, so we're getting, um, charged, but, uh, maybe up to two hundred dollars extra?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. And, uh, I guess along with that, I'm just wondering, uh, isn't there a way, uh, if, I mean, with the technology, we're talking all about this technology. Isn't there a way to be able to monitor electronically what each, um, dumpster is dumping?
We do have cameras in-
Trilators?
We have cameras in the truck, cause the only technology that we can wait, really say. And once that, once it's dumped in the truck, I mean, it, it's in the truck at that point.
But as it's being dumped, can't the cameras catch? Uh, like if your yard waste, they, can't they catch recycles being in the yard waste? As it's being dumped with the cam, uh, the camera?
The whole purpose, the whole purpose of the camera is, um, like for instance, if you have something in there you're not supposed to, that's the purpose of it, so that way they can stop. So for instance, if you've got a, uh, dehydrator, um, or I'm trying to think, a, a microwave and appliance or something that you're not supposed to have in there, cause then the guy has to go up in there, climb, pull it out, um, you know, and then typically, then they'll put that on there, on the yard waste side. Um, yeah, I mean, if they picked up and it was garbage, of course, that would be obvious, um, you know. It, it'd go either way.
Ha- have we ever, has the city ever caught anybody who was violating, uh, uh, the recycling or the yard waste by putting material in there that was a violation of what? Have we ever caught anybody?
So what we do, we have, and we, we give them a violation. So it's, you know, whatever the case was, we found yard waste in your can or a microwave in your can or whatever it is. We have a violation that we give them. And then in return, they fill out a log and they bring it back into the office. And we have, we have a program with everybody's account on it and we put in those remarks that we found it. So there's a history there. Now, as far as finding them, w- we can't necessarily do that right now. It's, there's no ordinance on that a- as far as finding goes. So there, we're really limited to what we can do other than if it's repeat offenders, you know, three, four, or five times, we make contact with the, with the residents and we let them know that you, you can't put X, Y, and Z into this specific can.
A- and that, that's what concerns me, Randy and Sam, is that regardless of what program, uh, the council would, uh, choose, uh, there's probably gonna be contin- continuation of contamination, which is gonna mean extra cost for the city, just like it is right now. And there's no way to say whether your contracted services are keeping them with a public employee, uh, uh, the city of Waterloo, uh, which one's gonna be better? So there, I think there's a risk, uh, regardless of which way you go. So, uh, the other part about this is the site, the sites, the four sites we have right now. And, uh, I, in the, um, presentation, it's, are you, which dumpsters the city collects? Which ones are you referring to? Are you referring to the right environmental ones that get dumped? Or are you referring to other dumpsters?
Just, just the one that the city has, which is right environmental.
Okay, it, cause you said two times a week. Now, when I called last week about this, I heard that it was three times a week they're supposed to be dumped.
Well, as far as how often they dump those, they, they check them daily. So it's, it's as it's needed. So, um, tha- that's how they actually bill us on that. So they're, they're checking that multiple times. I mean, there's even days that it's more than once a day that they're checking it and if they're full, then they'll empty them. So on, on the actual, um, drop-off sites themselves, that's on a, as need. And they, they wait till they're full because we get, you know, we pay for, um, each time that they, they dump it, so.
Okay, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but, and I'm, I'm not meaning to be argumentative at all, uh, Randy, just concerned. Uh, because I know for a fact last week that those dumpsters, especially the one over by the fire department, was not dumped. It continued to be full to the point that I was getting calls from people who were just leaving the cardboard material, not, not junk stuff, it's stuff that's supposed to be recycled. And that's when I made my calls and found out they're supposed to be dumped three times. Well, I knew for a fact that this one at the fire department couldn't be dumped. So who checks on right environmental to make sure that they're living up to their contract with us?
That, that would be Sam and I's job to, to make sure that they're doing that. And we just visited with them last week and we can definitely do a follow-up. I mean, we, we do contact them and we were addressing as far as how full they were getting. We also were, um, addressing as far as the debris that's laying around the different sites. And not just around the sites, but, you know, where the wind caught it, you know, addressing that as well, too. Cause that's all part of the contract that they're supposed to do in that. So we did just have a conversation with them, but, um, you know, we need to be on them probably more frequently.
Do we know what days of the week they pick those up? Or does it vary?
It, it varies, like I said, it, it's, they do it as needed, like I said, um, for what they, they told us. Um, and last week was the first time that I actually, um, had sat down and actually met with them more on a one-on-one, discussing some more of the issues. But, um, that's when they, they made the comment that, you know, they do it as needed. So they're, they're checking them frequently.
Okay, okay, s- and thank you. And, uh, the, the part about, uh, the sites, the part about the mandatory versus, um, voluntary, um, I brought this up at the ward meeting that I had, um, just recently. And it was resoundingly, don't make this mandatory. This would just be a voluntary kinda thing. And every one of them, though, that was there was in favor of the two extra container option. Uh, and that was a hundred percent on both of those, Randy and Sam, uh, from the people that attended the meeting. Uh, the other thi- so just to let you know that, and that's what I'm in favor of. But I'm definitely not in favor of privatizing this. That needs to go by the wayside. This is something that the accountability of a public employee is the most important aspect of this. And their accountability happens two times, not just one. And it happens really a third time. And that's why I would be against any kind of contracting out. For various reasons, I'm not gonna get into those right now because, uh, I, I, I just believe it should stay with the city, that we should purchase what's necessary to make this program work, uh, with our refuse, our recycle, and our yard waste. And that the public, uh, needs to be aware that if that takes one or two more employees to be doing that and doing that satisfactorily and safely, then that's what I think we need to do. Because the city of Waterloo, as you said, the people of Waterloo deserve that kinda service from their, uh, public, uh, employees that they pay their taxes for. So, thank you.
And I guess, just to maybe follow up with that, I guess the one thing I'd wanna comment to is, you know, currently, we're just picking up the recycling once a month, you know, where we, we were wanting to increase it. You know, and Sam and I were kinda talking about that on, you know, what, what would it take to be able to do that? You know, staff-wise, you know, and, and we were figuring it'd probably be two to three more employees that we'd probably have to hire, um, you know, to probably be able to do that. And then we'd have to reevaluate equipment, you know. We, of course, at first, we'd try to, to do it with what we currently have, but, you know, it would just vary whether or not we'd have it or we'd have to potentially even look at more, uh, side loading trucks to be able to accomplish that. So it's not that you can't do it, it's just, w- right now, if we were wanting to increase the service, like what we're wanting to do, we don't have adequate staff to be able to do it.
And I, I understand that, Randy, thank you. But I, I guess I go back to my concern about anytime we privatize something, it's all about profit at that point in time. Rather than when we keep it within the public service realm, it's about oversight by, uh, any number of people within the city of Waterloo, as well as the council, the mayor, who's the boss of the department.
Okay.
I myself would be interested in what an RFP would bring forward for us to look at. I don't think we can compare what the appropriate thing to be doing would be until we have those numbers. We just need the numbers.
Just a follow-up question to something that Councilman, um, Schmidt mentioned. When we're, when we talk about contracting, we're just talking about contracting the recyclables and the yard waste, right? The normal trash would still be done by our staff.
The trash and yard waste would be done by the city. It would only be the recyclable-
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, 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 the refuse and the yard waste would still be done by the city. It would only be the recyclable materials.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Everything else would still be done to the city.
And then just real quickly on the, again, eleven thousand cans for six hundred thousand dollars, we don't know that we would need eleven thousand because we don't know that all eleven thousand are gonna be doing that.
But they were gonna do the yard waste, that's correct, yep.
And then, um, we've talked in the past about on the non-city recycling sites about putting up cameras. Because I certainly understand there are some people that maybe don't quite understand how the rules work, but there are also people that do, that just take advantage of it and that we should, uh, pursue those folks. Did I hear you say that, that on the, on the trucks, we have the cameras, that we can determine when people are, are basically contaminating the load and, and we don't do anything about it? Or we just notify them, we know they did it, but we don't do anything about it? And there's not an ordinance on the books? Okay, I, well, I would think we probably oughta have a conversation about getting that ordinance put on that book. I, I've never heard that before. That's crazy. Not you crazy.
No, I know, I understand that.
That's new, yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
Anyone else?
Come on.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question? I apologize for not being here. So, uh, in regards to the question about the contamination, can you give me a, like, thirty-second overview? So if I use my yard waste, uh, the week after I have done, uh, recycles, but the, it doesn't fully dump out, then I would get fined for it not getting fully dumped out? Or, or, or is it, you can, like, how, how would that work if you were gonna find somebody, I guess, sorry?
You wanna know how it's working right now or, or if you were to go to a-
No, I mean, how would it work? Like, I, I mean, in, in the instance of, you know, somebody illegally?
What, what I would say is, you know, sorry about that. Um, what I would say is probably what we'd wanna do is, you know, give people the benefit of the doubt, you know, like the first time, maybe give them a, a warning, you know, the second time you do that. If it's something that's more habitual and they're doing it all the time, then I would say, you know, the first time, we'd probably come up, whatever we, you know, I'd, I'd research to see what other communities have done. And I'm sure it would be progressive, you know, if they continue to do that, we would wanna stair-step it up as, as well.
I just know oftentimes, it doesn't fully empty, whether it's recyclable material or lawn.
And that's the problem with using the same container.
Yeah, exactly, yep, so, thank you.
Yep. So I guess the, the main thing is I'm, I'm looking, you know, at least ways if we did the RFP, it doesn't commit us one way or the other. At least ways then we could have some more, um, sound numbers where we can kinda present both sides, whether we opt to do that or not. I mean, that's still up to you guys whether or not you'd wanna consider that. Um, but at least ways then, it, it, you know, we're moving forward and-
I agree. If you wanna consider RFP, no?
It doesn't obligate us, you know, like I said, it's just-
I do.
Move forward.
So we, so yeah, we'll do that and see what the numbers are and then council can vote it up or down.
We'll do it for both the voluntary and then, um, then do we even wanna consider the mandi- mandatory part? Or do you wanna do both? Or do you just wanna do strictly the voluntary side of it?
I didn't get a post on the mandatory portion of it.
So, I mean, we can just have them do both and it doesn't mean that we have to do it, like I said, we're not-
It's kinda dependent to be on the cost, yeah.
Okay.
I'm for more information, yeah, lots of information.
We'll do that and we can go from there.
All right, can we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to make a second all in favor?
Aye.
Your adjourn.
Thank you, Randy, good job.
citations issued or anything like?
There were not. We had spoken with the victim. And he said, "I'm a neighbor. I'm out walking. I socialize. I don't want anything done at this time. I think what you've done is sufficient."
Okay, so quarantining the dog and just warning the people was enough at that time?
It was, for him.
So, what are citations? What are those fines?
Uh, the first citation, first offense is two hundred plus eighty-five court costs. Second is five hundred plus eighty-five. Third is seven hundred and fifty plus eighty-five.
So if you issued those citations, it can be quite a financial burden on some people, can't it?
It would be.
Well, let's step on to the second incident then. Did you work that also?
I did.
Yeah, that would have been dated August twenty-third of twenty eighteen, just about two months later.
August twenty-third, yep.
And it looks like the victim here is an eight-year-old, uh, excuse me, seven-year-old boy named Raymond Pittman.
Raymond, that's correct.
Okay, he would have been nine years old at the time. And what happened with Raymond? How did he get bitten?
Uh, he was in the backyard playing. And I guess one of the children in the house, again, opened the door. And the dog ran out of the house and bit him in the back of the knee.
And did this child require medical attention also?
He did.
And where would that have taken place?
Uh, he had gone to, uh, urgent care, North Crossing.
All right, that's a division, I guess, of Unity Point?
It is, Unity Point Urgent Care.
Allen's Urgent Care, basically. That's up there in Logan Avenue?
Uh, the new plaza there that was put in.
All right. And did the child require medical attention then?
He did.
And you talked to the child's parent or guardian?
I believe it was Grandma who I spoke to.
Okay. And were there any citations issued as a result of this?
Uh, to begin with, yes, they wanted them. And then they made the ultimate decision that, no, we've got to live by these people and...
So are these people neighbors also?
They are.
Okay, so this dog is, uh, really doesn't leave the yard much, apparently. Just, this happened in its own yard?
In the yard again.
Okay. And once again, was there any evidence that this child provoked or irritated the dog into biting it?
These both were unprovoked bites.
Okay. And you know that for a fact?
For a fact.
And the defendants and the Moskis say that also?
They did.
Okay. Did you have them sign another quarantine letter?
I did.
And did they abide by that?
They did. I believe at this time, the dog was moved over to a residence, to a daughter's residence on Real or Kern or one of them streets. I'm not exactly sure. Excuse me, seven fifty-four Kern is where it was quarantined, at a sister's home.
Okay. So now, I guess you're done, we're done with you for right now. Let's bring Ms. Sapp up here, if we could. Or Snap, sorry. Can you tell the folks here your name, please?
Sonia Snap, Animal Control Officer for City of Waterloo.
And how long have you been in that position?
Um, just a little bit over a year.
Okay. Did you work the third bite in this case?
I did.
And when did that happen?
Uh, the bite happened on the eighth of April.
Okay, so just last month?
Yes.
And where did the bite happen?
Um, sixteen forty-four Oakwood Drive.
So right there at the home again?
Yes.
And who was bitten, do you recall?
Uh, it was a six-year-old, uh, female named Traylen Henley.
And where was she in relationship to the residents at the time?
She was in the backyard playing on a swing set.
And how did this dog bite happen, then?
Um, just, it just says that the dog was let out, um, while the child was in the yard, and it ran up and bit her.
Okay, so did the child have to obtain medical care?
Yes, she did.
And where did she go?
Uh, Allen Emergency Department.
Okay. Now, have you confirmed this with the child's mother or caretaker?
Yes, I spoke to her mother.
Okay. And what, uh, is she a neighbor also?
Is she what?
Is she a neighbor of, uh...
Um, yeah, I believe she lives a few doors down from them.
Okay, so were any citations written at this time?
No, I spoke to her mother, and she opted to not have citations issued.
Okay, I guess everybody wanted to be good neighbors. Uh, you haven't seen, you didn't see the bite, I assume, did you?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, did, was it under, how did we get this letter of April ninth written and declaring this to be a dangerous dog? Was that your decision or Ms. Greco's?
Uh, I spoke with Sandy about it, and that's the conclusion that we came to because of the, such short span that the three bites occurred.
This was less than ten months, pretty much, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Now, how did you find out about this particular bite?
Um, Brian Mosky called me that night and informed me that a child that was playing in his yard had been bitten by his dog, and that this was, in fact, the third time that the dog had bitten somebody.
So, Mr. Mosky, the owner of the dog actually called you?
Yes, sir.
So that's, that's the way you found out?
Yes.
All right. And where is the dog now?
Uh, the dog is being boarded at Paw, uh, Paw Prints. Let me look here. Paw Prints Pet Salon on, um, East Rock Road.
Okay, so it hasn't been back to the home since the bite then, or since you took control?
No, sir. It was quarantined at Brookside Vet until the seventeenth, and then it was moved on eighteenth to Paw Prints.
And once again, was this dog vaccinated up to date as, at the time of the bite?
Yes, it was.
So we don't have to worry about rabies or anything like that?
Correct.
All righty. Did you have, did counsel have any other questions then for anyone before we go in? We can let the Moskis go ahead and give their side. Thank you.
Mr. Zellifer?
Yeah.
Okay, does the, uh, breed of the animal, uh, is that mentioned?
Yeah, it's a tan pit bull, about five years old, five or six. I think it was four for the first bite, and now it's five. It's a male named Simon.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And how, how long have the Moskis had the dog?
I mean, we'll put them on, and you can ask them.
Okay.
Is anybody ready for the Moskis?
I have just a quick question.
Sure.
Is the dog registered here at the city? Does it have a license?
Yes, has a license, and, uh, it has its rabies vaccination. It can't be, it can't get a license unless it has a rabies vaccination. It has both. Go ahead, Moskis, whoever your spokes, yes.
Uh, one other thing, and that is, if the city becomes aware of, of this, especially on a repeated basis, do we need to have the victim write the citation, or cannot the city do that on its own, knowing that the violation exists?
We can do it on our own, but we need a willing victim to testify. If they don't want to come and testify, then, uh, we have to, that's where we have this particular process right now.
Okay, thanks.
Ma'am, could you stand and spell your, state your name and your address, please?
Karis Mosky, sixteen forty-four Oakwood Drive.
All righty, make sure everybody can hear you, and the floor is yours.
Okay, I have a note from where he's staying, from Paw Prints, if you would want to look at that.
Did you make enough for everybody or just the...
I didn't know I needed more than one, so I have to...
Thank you.
And we, we got the dog, it's actually my daughter Carrie's dog, it's actually her dog. But we, we got it about three or four years ago, three years ago. We got it from the Humane Society. They do a lot of things with dogs before they adopt them out. It wasn't vicious or any of that sort of thing, um, considered. And I actually don't believe that these, uh, bites were completely unprovoked. I think the dog is protecting my kids, is what, what's going on. And when you call it unprovoked, that means they did nothing, you know, nothing happened, in my opinion. So, um, so what I've done, uh, the fir-, after the first bite, the, the dog actually opened, kind of opened the door itself. It went, went up against those little handle things, and it got out the door that time. After that bite, I put up a baby gate in front of the door, so the dog could not get to the door to get out, which stopped him from being able to get out. And I also put up a small amount of fencing around my back stairwell, so that the dog could go directly into the backyard and not be able to go into the street or to the, toward the street. And then, um, the second time that the dog bit someone, it was the neighbors next door to us, it was his, their son. But they were all playing in the backyard. The little girl that was there, too, she got hurt. And my grandson came, came in the house to get a Band-Aid for her. So there was crying, there was yelling going on, and he, of course, was worried about getting a Band-Aid for the little girl, and, uh, left the gate open, so the dog got out the gate and the door into the backyard. And then the third time, um, my husband thought only the kids were, or my kids were playing in the backyard, so he let the dog out because he thought it had to go to the bathroom. We did not know that there were other kids in the backyard. Wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't have let it out. In that case, it was a purely accident that that happened at all. And I guess, if anybody else has anything to say? Got anything to say?
He's a noble dog. He's nice. He's sweet. He's very protective. He's just very protective.
I got, I don't know if you want to, I got a couple videos of him while we're at the, on my phone.
Anybody on counsel have any questions for Ms. Mosky?
Yes, Mr. Zellifer? Yes, um, I'd like to ask, during the time it was at Paw Prints, during that time, was it totally isolated, or was it exposed to other dogs, to other adults?
It was exposed to several adults that run the place. I didn't, I did, and a few times, it was exposed to other dogs, at least while I was there, because she let it run, come through the thing, and there's other dogs that they had to go around to get to the kennel where we were at. And there's even cats there. It didn't bother her.
So it was pretty much isolated, except for the caregivers?
Yeah, all of them are, yeah, all of them are iso- isolated while they're boarding, for the most part. Um, they're in their own little kennel, and then they go out to, to use, to be in the kennel to go outside. But they, they go through where there's dogs that are not kennelled. They're, they have several of them behind their desk that he had no problems with. He, she didn't even, when I was there the last time, she didn't even leash him to take him out. I mean, I mean, it's enclosed, the area, so. And there was other dogs roaming the areas. He's not, he's not vicious, or, you know, aggressive toward any other animals even.
Has he ever had another situation where you've seen any aggression towards another, another animal or another human being?
Not any other animals. Uh, um, like, at least in, a year before that, when he was living with his, my daughter, there was an incident with a person there, but...
And did he bite that person as well?
Uh, yes, he did.
Pardon?
Yes.
So that's four bites that you're aware of?
But it's not. The, the first one was like over, probably a year before the other three.
But it's still in total four of them?
Well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Zellifer?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Morrissey?
Do, when, when this first happened, did you, um, get the definitions of what a dangerous and vicious animal would be?
I got a two, the, the final, the, I think I've got like a two-page thing, not the whole packet of it. And I didn't get the whole packet of it until I went to the courthouse to get it myself.
Okay, and...
Or here.
So, but you understand what the definition is?
Sort of, it...
Okay, does your dog fit that definition?
I don't think it, that it does. I mean...
But if you look strictly at the definition, does your dog fit?
Well, go ahead and say the definition to me, I guess.
Well, I don't have it in front of me.
I don't either.
Okay, a dangerous animal, as defined in the Code of Ordinance, is any animal or species of animal which is not naturally tame or gentle, and which is of a wild nature disposition, which is capable of killing, inflicting serious injury upon, or causing disease among human beings or domestic animals, and having tendencies as a species to do so. And B, any animal declared to be dangerous by the city council or an animal control officer. And the following animals or species of animals, uh, shall be deemed dangerous per se, and then it just goes through and names all of them.
Dangerous dog.
Oh, dangerous dog, thank you, okay. Dangerous dog, any dog which bites or attacks a person or other domestic animal without provocation and causes injury not severe enough to result in a broken bone or laceration requiring multiple sutures, or any dog that, according to available records, has committed such act.
Okay, I guess the thing I would disagree, that he's vicious under that definition, because I don't believe it was a completely unprovoked. There was a reason for him to bite. He's just being protective of our, of our kids.
And was the seventy-year-old gentleman walking out front?
He was, the kids were out, too. My daughter was talking, not this daughter, another daughter that's not here today, was out, talking to him with a kid nearby as well.
And Ms. Mosky, when you got this, uh, your, your dog, Simon, uh, three years ago, uh, did you get the history of the dog before you took it home?
Um, I think so. It didn't have any history that I know, that I'm aware of.
Well, I know, going to the Humane Society, you fall in love with animals.
Well, the Humane Society, well, the Humane Society gave a little bit of stuff. He didn't have very much written about him.
Did they talk about, uh, any prior, uh, problems with him being aggressive?
Nope.
Or about who had raised him, if there was any concerns about how the dog was treated by the previous owners?
Nope.
Nothing like that at all?
I think it was just, uh, I think it was, I don't know if it was a stray or not. I can't remember. It's been quite a while ago.
Okay, so, but, I, I mean, if you...
I, I don't know really any history, other than what, when he was with them.
Okay, so, but you have children?
Yes.
Yeah, how many children do you have, if I could ask?
I have three adult daughters, one son, and I have guardianship of my two grandsons.
And they could all be at your house?
Yes, and my younger grandson, who's only one, can be, that, he's been around the dog, too. The, he's, the dog actually stayed over at their house when he was a baby, that last year, when he was quarantined over there.
So, and Simon could be protective of all those people there?
Yeah, he could be.
And that could result in somebody getting bit who didn't plan on getting bit?
Yes, and what I was going to try to do to make sure that doesn't happen again is I put a kennel up in my backyard, to where he's not going to be just let out the door to the backyard anymore, at all.
Thank you, Ms. Mosky.
Does anyone else have any questions? Ms. Mosky, are you through? Did you have anybody else who wanted to say something?
Anybody else? Do you want to say anything just now?
Carrie Mosky. And then, um, when I take Simon on walks, he's fine with other people. Like, he doesn't bother him. He just basically walks and sniffs around, so. And like, he cuddles, he's fine with cats. Like, I have left him alone with my cats. He's perfectly fine. He's never shown any aggressive behavior, but he does, is very protective of the kids. Like, he doesn't get that way when he's with adults. It's mostly the kids, so.
Mr. Zellifer?
Yes.
Yes, I, I was wondering, uh, so when you take him on walks, is he on a leash?
Yes, on a leash.
Anyone else have any questions? We are running out of time, I see.
Uh, Mr. Zellifer, one other question, and that is, uh, Ms. Greco, what options are there, uh, if the council would say that this dog is, uh, de- deemed a dangerous dog? What are the options for the dog?
Uh, excuse me. According to our ordinance, um, the dog will be destroyed humanely.
And could the city council, um, suggest options, or, or we have to go strictly by what the code is saying?
According to our ordinance, there are no options.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Zellifer?
No, I've, I've had enough. I think we'd just be beating a dead horse here if we, we kept going, but, uh...
Are there any comments for discussion amongst the council?
What happens is the council should vote, and then Ms. Felkley has to put it in writing and deliver it to Mr. and Mrs. Mosky, uh...
We will entertain a motion in just a moment. Just wondered if anyone had anything they wanted to discuss before then.
Madam Chairperson, how does the motion read?
Um, I would recommend, um, making a motion to either affirm or reverse the decision of Waterloo Animal Control to deem Simon, uh, dangerous.
Yeah, the letter of April ninth deemed the dog dangerous. Your job here is to either affirm that letter or to reject it.
I would then entertain a motion for, something for consideration.
Madam Chairperson, um, before I make the motion, I just want to, um, have everyone understand that a dog in our community that is biting, I understand that the dog is being protective, which that's what dogs do. But my concern is, is that this dog being protective is still having opportunity to do the things that it's doing. Having said that, I will make a motion to affirm what our Animal Control Department has deemed appropriate.
Second. Any further discussion?
Can I just, sorry, Madam Chair, I, I just want to agree with Mr. Amos on, on what he said about the, the dog. It's a difficult decision, regardless of anything, but, you know, when you have a dog that's being protective, it's, it's, it gets, one more time could do much worse, and...
Especially when it's been for...
Yeah.
I would agree. Madam Clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes. And regrettably, that's our decision. Um, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Good evening, this, welcome you to the Waterloo City Council Finance Committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Jewin?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda, please, in minutes.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of April twen-, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Okay, entertain a motion to go through the travel request, please.
Madam Chairperson, we have some travel requests today. Abraham Funchess, Executive Director, Rebecca Johnson, HR Specialist, Shelley Birch, Admin Secretary, to attend the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Federal Employment Partnership Agency Conference, San Diego, California, June seventeenth through the twenty-first, not to exceed five thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Sergeant Gerke to attend the covert track training in Aurora, Illinois, May first and second, not to exceed three hundred seventy-three dollars. Keith Caspari, Airport Director, which is amended, to attend the Spring twenty-nineteen Meeting of the Iowa Public Airports Association, Sioux City, Iowa, April sixteenth through eighteenth, not to exceed four hundred five dollars seventy-six cents. Steve Holmberger, Waste Management Service Director, to attend the Iowa Water Environmental Association Annual Conference in Elton, Iowa, June fourth through the sixth, not to exceed, uh, six hundred eighty dollars. Tina Shellhorn, Electrical Foreman, and Kelby Haynes, Electrician, to attend the Mobile Crane Operator Certification Examination Class, Ankeny, Iowa, June tenth through the fourteenth, not to exceed two thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Lastly, Mary Quentinhardt and Michelle Weedner, CFO, to attend, to meet with the Moody's Investor Services in Chicago, Illinois, May ninth and tenth of twenty nineteen, not to exceed one thousand sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, let's go into the preauthorization to expend over a thousand, but let's do seven through fourteen. Would someone be willing to take that on, please?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
Uh, number seven is, uh...
Hold on, so you're, you're going to split up the preauthorizations?
Yeah.
I can do that.
Probably not. Can you do them all?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, okay.
Madam Chairperson, motion to approve the following preauthorizations to expend over one thousand dollars. First is, uh, building maintenance with the mountain estimate shipping handling, nine thousand nine hundred ten dollars, to replace air conditioning system for veterans from Memorial Hall. Nexus Cultural and Arts with the mountain estimate shipping handling, one thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars for twenty-four chairs for meetings and events. Next is a garage with mountain estimate shipping handling, eight thousand six thirty-nine, uh, dollars forty-one cents for cabinet control box, the IO box and accessories for curb tender garbage truck number one oh two. And next is mountain estimate shipping handling, three thousand two hundred six dollars and thirty-two cents plus two hundred shipping and handling for turbocharger and cores for leisure services, aerial truck number four one zero three zero eight. And next is leisure services with the mountain estimate and shipping and handling, not to exceed sixteen thousand seven hundred thirty dollars for design, construction, and demolition plans related to the replacement of the Gates Park Golf Course maintenance building and the demolition of existing building. Next is leisure services with the mountain estimate shipping handling, not to exceed forty-six hundred dollars to replace clutch and related components on the chipper. Next is MIS Department, mountain estimate shipping handling, three thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-five cents for fiber connection into fire station number two. And next is MIS Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling, one thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars eighty-four cents for two license renewals for Adobe Creative Cloud. Next is planning and zoning with the mountain estimate shipping handling, three thousand two hundred dollars for appraisals of twenty-nine twenty Bedard Drive, former Bridge Street, and land adjacent to thirty-seventy West Airline Highway. Next is the Police Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling of one thousand six hundred twenty dollars to replace Canon DRM one zero six zero paper scanner for the records section of the Police Department. Next is the Sanitation Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling, forty-three thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars plus three thousand three hundred forty dollars and twenty-six cents shipping and handling for three hundred large green ninety-six gallon, three hundred large blue ninety-six gallon, and three hundred medium sixty-four gallon carts. Next is Sanitation Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling, sixteen thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents for the hydraulic clutch and hardware. Next is Sewer Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling, thirty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars plus six hundred seventy-four dollars shipping and handling for the waste activated sledge pump for waste activated sledge building. Next is the Traffic Department with the mountain estimate shipping handling, eighteen thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents for twelve Miller burn street light poles with eight-foot arm and hardware. And number twenty-one is traffic with, uh, for a mountain estimate shipping and handling of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for ASC rotating siren cabinet and hardware for defective siren located at thirty-one fifty-nine Logan Avenue.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone take the budget line items, please?
Madam Chairperson, budget line items to be amended. Approve the project budget amendment for the Tri-County Forfeitures Project to budget to spend additional revenue received in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars, as submitted by the Police Department. Approve the budget amendment for the Housing Authority for Ridgeway Towers, including the use of two thousand dollars in fund balance previously authorized to be used for pest control services, as submitted by the Housing Authority. Approve the budget amendment for the Housing Authority for the voucher choice program, including the use of eight thousand six hundred seventy dollars in contingency funds for various expense increases, as submitted by the Housing Authority. Approve the budget amendment for the Leisure Services General Sports Improvement Project to use donations received in prior years in the amount of six thousand six hundred five dollars seventy-nine cents in the current fiscal year, as submitted by the Leisure Services. Approve the budget amendment for the Sewer Fund to use additional interest revenue earned in the current fiscal year in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars for various expense increases, as submitted by Waste Management Services. Approve the project budget amendment for the demolition of five thirty-six Dawson Street, partially funded with insurance proceeds in the amount of ten thousand dollars, as submitted by planning. And lastly, to approve the budget amendment for the Young Arena to budget to use additional revenue received in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, and to request the use of general fund balance in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars to fund various additional expenses, as submitted by Leisure Services.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, the bill's payment, um, in the amount of three million seven hundred and four thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents, as in accounts payable dated May sixth, two thousand nineteenth, uh, to accept, place on file, and forward to the full council. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.